You're watching Cable 2.
Good evening and welcome to the August 27, 2024 Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Board of Education meeting. I am Deanna Kaplan, Board Chair. I appreciate your attendance and I also say good evening to our viewers on Cable 2. Will you please rise as we start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing as you are able for the invocation given by Board Member Susan Miller?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the principle which stands one nation, united in thy, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Winnie the Pooh said, "You are braver than you believe, stronger than you seem, and smarter than you think." May we now have a moment of silence in memory of a math teacher at East Forsyth Middle School who recently passed away. Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Miller. Our first order of business tonight is the agenda review. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Kuhn. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, that is unanimous. So, our student performance, we are going to welcome the Winston-Salem Play Program. Very excited.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Eugene Mabry. I am the lead teacher for music and theater in Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. Tonight's ensemble is from a partnership between WSFCS and the Winston-Salem Symphony, under the direction of my esteemed colleague and friend, Ms. Rachel Watson. Play Music stands for Piedmont Learning Academy for Youth. As the symphony's largest student program, Play enhances musical, social, emotional, and academic growth with a focus on childhood literacy. Play Music serves about 340 students in grades 1 through 12 in the triad area. Most of those students are Winston-Salem Forsyth County School students. Tonight's ensemble is Play Music's most advanced group, Team Price. These students receive two hours of weekly instruction, including chamberwork, sectionals, and private lessons, while also training to mentor younger students within the program. Team Price represents four schools. From the early college, we have Michael Cruzat; from Paisley, Amari Brown; from Reynolds, Zoe Stover; and Henry Viggers; and from Atkins, Adam Friedman, Brian Garcia, and Esther Partita. Tonight, they're going to perform for you Libertango in an arrangement by Astor Piazola. Please give them a warm round of applause for Team Price.
Oh, all of the parents of these incredibly talented artists, can you all stand as well so we can applaud you? Well, bravo, that was amazing. So, next is our special recognitions. Andrew Kraft, Director of Arts and Extended Learning, will present our first-place winner in the PENC National Young Artist Competition.
All right. Good evening, Distinguished Board, Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, and Superintendent McManus. Professional Educators of North Carolina is a nonprofit, state-based professional association that has proudly supported North Carolina teachers since 1979. Each year, PENC sponsors the Young Artist Competition. The Young Artist Competition recognizes North Carolina students, their artwork, the teachers, and the school districts for their commitment to visual arts education. The PENC Young Artist Competition has three divisions, elementary, middle, and high school. And the goal of this competition is to highlight the hard work of North Carolina's visual arts teachers, classroom teachers, and their students. So, the top three pieces of artwork for each division is chosen from among many submissions, and the student receives a certificate, small gift, and a gift card. Teachers receive a certificate, a gift card for $100 to purchase towards art supplies, and districts are presented with a canvas print of the student's artwork to display as they wish. So, joining me this evening to help recognize our winner is Tammy Beach, Executive Director of PENC, and Mitzi Shepherd, VP on the PENC Board and also Assistant Principal at Old Richmond Elementary. So, at this time, I'd like to recognize Serenity Key of Northwest Middle School for placing first in the middle school division, and the artwork was submitted by her teacher, Natasha Young. Let's have the applause.
Beautiful work. Next, Sheila Thorpe, Director of Social Work Services, will present the Attendance Awareness Month Proclamation.
Good evening, Superintendent McManus, Chair Kaplan, and Board. I am here with the proclamation for September as Attendance Awareness Month, which can be seen on the screen. I know the people in this room recognize the importance of school attendance in ensuring students succeed academically and socially and achieve their lifetime dreams. Chronic absence has become a national crisis. It is defined as missing 10% of the school year or just two days each month for any reason. Our district supports attendance initiatives to ensure students feel a sense of belonging and engagement in our schools. We are offering the proclamation as a formal recognition of the importance of attendance and our commitment to ensuring students are at school on time every day and engaged, which is communicated in our district campaign, Every Minute Matters. We are beginning to see the impact of systemically addressing attendance in our district. Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools' data reflects that during the 2023-2024 school year, 31.82% of students were chronically absent, which was a reduction of 5.8% from the previous school year. We are addressing attendance in multiple initiatives, and Katie Key, Director of Nursing, will share with you later about a collaborative partnership aimed at ensuring student health needs are met in the schools. Thank you for your continued support in ensuring our students are here all day, every day, engaged and ready to learn.
And last but not least is our Board Spotlight video.
On August 12, we welcomed back tens of thousands of students to our schools. It took an entire summer of cleaning, preparing...
Getting things ready for our babies to come back.
Repairing, practicing, and prepping our 81 schools and numerous facilities just to get to this.
Good morning. You ready? Give us mine. There you go, you got pretty teeth. There you go.
Couldn't sleep last night. This is a great day.
You alright? Alright.
You only get one first day, and so this is the day where you want to make that impression, set the tone.
I want to welcome the class of 2028 to the village.
Yeah, put them up to the side in the grass.
It was really smooth. Our car line at Griffith, I couldn't believe it, because the cars, you could see them all around Deaton Thompson Stadium, and I thought it was going to take a lot of time, but it was like clockwork.
Every year comes with new adventures. I'm just excited to meet the new students that you're going to have in class and build those relationships.
And some of our students were busy all summer as well. One of them entertained the board at the first meeting of the new year.
Wish I could be part of that world.
Nyla Lee was the lead in The Little Mermaid during Summer Enrichment.
My name is Nyla Lee. This is my first year at Summer Enrichment. I'm so proud of what we've done as, you know, a group in the community to put on this show. It's a really great show, The Little Mermaid. It's amazing, and I love that we have the chance to, you know, input our own ideas and our own choices into The Little Mermaid. I was so excited because I love Ariel so much, her character. I can really relate to her, you know, going after what she wants, chasing her dreams. It's really inspiring.
My name is Lane Maggard. I've been doing Summer Enrichment since 2017. There's a great community at the Summer Enrichment Program here. We all get along, and since this is a theater program, we all are invested in theater. It gives you a good lesson of being responsible. You've got to work at home for it. You've got to be committed to this program, or you're not going to get anything out of it. And I think that's a good lesson to learn, because that's how life is. If you don't commit to it, if you don't persevere and do your best and strive to be your best, then what are you getting out of it?
My name is Ha Kim Sutherland. You really have to sell the fact that you're another person, and I think that is really cool. I really enjoy that about acting, that like, you really step outside of your own world and into another that is so, can be so fictional, full of mermaids and magic, but it feels so real because of the people around you. Everyone has put on such amazing performances. They go up on that stage and they have a smile on their face, because we all have just grown with each other and like, learned so many things together. And when you do something like this, it's an experience that like, bonds you almost for life. I definitely would support coming here and just being a part of something that is so much bigger than what you could possibly imagine.
And that's the Board Spotlight for August 2024.
At this time, we will hear public comments on the agenda items only. If you've signed up to speak, we ask that you sit near the aisle seats closest to the podium. We expect civility. Please be kind, considerate, and respectful. Direct your comments only to me as Board Chair and not to anyone in the audience. No, we cannot talk about sensitive and private student or personnel information in this public setting. Please know that each public comment is heard, and there is a follow-up process to address your questions or concerns. You have three minutes to speak, and if you have more to share, always know you can email us directly. Our first speaker tonight is Allen Daniel.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, members of the Board, and Ms. McManus. On April 30, at the Finance Committee, Mr. Krantz presented what was the most detailed accounting to date of the Article 46 sales tax increase money. That accounting showed that in the very first year that the sales tax passed, while the county budgeted $10 million, surprisingly, during COVID, we actually collected $17 million. Consequently, the supplement was increased $100 that year. So, since 2021, now to 2024, the annual revenue has increased, it actually increased in one year, 2022 over to 2023, by $3.5 million. Yet during that year, no raise was given to our teachers, and that same revenue came in this year. And it was said that there would be a $1,000 increase given to our teachers from the surplus. At the end of the April 30 Board Meeting, I expressed concern about the fact that while the revenue had increased, the expenditures had increased even more rapidly, and that actually there was not a $5 million surplus, there was a $2.5 million surplus. But that that $2.5 million surplus would have to be spent in this coming school year to maintain the current level of funding, because this past school year, we received $20,593,000, but we spent $22,639,000. Yet, if you do the math, the $3,000 that each teacher receives, they also, the supplement has to also pay for their fringe benefits, which is 33%. That comes to $3990. I'm told that we have 4,000, it was said at that meeting, we have 4,311 teachers. If you multiply 4,311 times $3990, it comes to $17.5 million. Yet this year, it was projected that we would spend $22.6 million, which is $5 million more, which is enough to pay an additional 1,500 employees $3990 a year. And so today, the new schedule is released, and guess what? My concerns were borne out. There is no increase for teachers. So my question tonight, and I hope it will be answered, is what happened to the $1,000? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Ron Cavanas?
Good evening, Chairman Kaplan, Board Members, and Superintendent McManus. I'm Ron Cavanas. I'm a retired principal at Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, teaching and administrative service, whatever, 40 years. And I'm here tonight to speak reference to the issue of the building site of Brunson Elementary School on the Patterson Avenue site that you are considering again tonight. For 16 years, I worked at Lawrence, and as any principal would be, but I always felt that my most important responsibility was the safety and health of my students, staff, and anyone who worked in the building or entered the building where I was a principal. During those years, like any principal, we dealt with a number of issues in an old building, and we did renovations, some great renovations to Haynes, but we dealt with a number of issues many times. They were frustrating, working with maintenance, trying to figure out what causes this or that. But we continued to do that. I retired in 2006, and I learned in my retirement that Haynes Lawrence was sitting on a contaminated site. Of course, this interested me, because I had worked in that facility, and I was responsible for children and staff and everyone who was in that building, including myself. So, when the debate came about closing or not closing Haynes Lawrence, I deeply felt, based on my experience, that the Board made a correct decision to close Haynes Lawrence, students and staff, and school use, because there were a number of issues that were still not resolved, questions about the hazards, the contaminants, abatement, and new issues and how to deal with them. And the maintenance department and the school system was working very hard to deal with those. So, I've been interested, and I'm glad for that decision. When I saw the Brunson issue come up, I guess as a principal, you never lose your interest and your concern for young people, and that's why we're in the business. And so I kept up with this issue, and I just have to stand before you and say that based on my experience and based on a lot of extensive research I've done, I would oppose using the site on Patterson Avenue for Brunson Elementary School. I think there are issues there, and there have been improvements in the abatement and so forth, but I still would not have peace of mind using that site. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Jenny Easter?
Good evening. As President of FCAE, I wanted to speak tonight on a few salary clarifications. One, to ask or clarify the concern from our classified members about the $500,000 raise that was allocated and passed by the county commissioners in June, and to ask about the market study, because that was a stipulation, to understand tonight, hopefully, if there's a deadline on that market study, since we missed out on that last year and lost $1 million. Also, to get clarity on echoing what Mr. Daniel said earlier about the quarter cent sales tax supplement, Article 46, just understanding why we are still getting the same amount as last year, when we usually get the 300 per month, but we were, it was passed at the end of last year that we would use the cushion that we've been setting on for the past couple of years. So, even if it's not a full thousand, like, why we're not getting even a little bit more? Just clarifying that. If we don't have answers tonight, I hope that it is at the top of your priority list to find the answers ASAP, especially considering how much your school staff and the members of the Forsyth County Association of Educators have advocated on behalf of the district to our county commissioners for this extra support. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Antonazzi?
So my comments are about Brunson, and I have submitted some documents for the Board to consider. Back in June of this year, I attended a Building and Grounds Committee. It was the first time the million-dollar ground fields consultants were in the same room with the Board of Education, at least publicly that we know about. I see Mr. Berlin and Mr. Waterson are making a second appearance here tonight. You had one job that day, one job, and it was to ask this one simple question. With this plan of yours, is there more than zero risk for the health of Brunson Elementary students? That should have been your only concern, period, but it was not. I listened to your comments at the meeting, and again, from the recording on my phone, you see, you decided not to record that meeting with the consultants. You made it so the families of Brunson would never hear the consultants' explanations nor your words of encouragement. In the end, now almost five-year construction delay has increased the cost of New Brunson by at least $20 million, almost twice the original price, and student capacity has been reduced by 25%. Despite these facts, Mr. Walker has spun a tall tale of cost savings, and the Math Challenge Board members will thank him for his efforts. You cannot mention environmental health risk to students without mentioning which children the Board repeatedly puts at risk. Haynes Lawrence, Ashley, and now Brunson. These are all Title I schools. All three are also an Urban District I schools. If you, the Board, dare to discuss Brunson tonight, let's not get lost in your rationale of rats' mold in a floodplain. Rats can be eliminated with a trap. Mold can be remediated with a lawsuit that is a reference to... And that's why we're in the business. And I and so I kept up with this issue, and I just have to stand before you and say that based on my experience and based on a lot of extensive research I've done, I would I would oppose using the site on Patterson Avenue for Brunson Elementary School. I think there are issues there, and there have been improvements in the abatement and so forth, but I still would not have peace of mind using that site. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Jenny Easter.
Good evening. As president of FCAE, I wanted to speak tonight on a few salary clarifications. One, to ask or clarify the concern from our classified members about the $500,000 raise that was allocated and passed by the county commissioners in June, and to ask about the market study, because that was a stipulation, to understand tonight, hopefully, if there's a deadline on that market study, since we missed out on that last year and lost a million dollars. Also, to get clarity on echoing what Mr. Daniel said earlier about the quarter cent sales tax supplement, Article 46, just understanding why we are still getting the same amount as last year, when we usually get the 300 per month. But we were it was passed at the end of last year that we would use the cushion that we've been setting on for the past couple of years. So even if it's not a full thousand, like why we're not getting even a little bit more? Just clarifying that. If we don't have answers tonight, I hope that it is at the top of your priority list to find the answers ASAP, especially considering how much your school staff and the members of the Forsyth County Association of Educators have advocated on behalf of the district to our county commissioners for this extra support. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Antonasi.
So my comments are about Brunson, and I have submitted some documents for the board to consider. Back in June of this year, I attended a building and grounds committee. It was the first time the million dollar brownfields consultants were in the same room with the Board of Education, at least publicly that we know about. I see Mr. Berlin and Mr. Waterson are making a second appearance here tonight. You had one job that day, one job, and it was to ask this one simple question. With this plan of yours, is there more than zero risk for the health of Brunson Elementary students? That should have been your only concern, period, but it was not. I listened to your comments at the meeting, and again, from the recording on my phone, you see, you decided not to record that meeting with the consultants. You made it so the families of Brunson would never hear the consultants' explanations nor your words of encouragement. In the end, now almost five-year construction delay has increased the cost of New Brunson by at least $20 million, almost twice the original price, and student capacity has been reduced by 25%. Despite these facts, Mr. Walker has spun a tall tale of cost savings, and the math-challenged board members will thank him for his efforts. You cannot mention environmental health risks to students without mentioning which children the board repeatedly puts at risk. Haynes Lawrence, Ashley, and now Brunson. These are all Title I schools. All three are also an Urban District One schools. If you, the board, dare to discuss Brunson tonight, let's not get lost in your rationale of rats' mold in a floodplain. Rats can be eliminated with a trap. Mold can be remediated with a lawsuit, that is a reference to Ashley, and the floodplain. Well, there was an engineering solution to that as well. You paid for those same methods for the eyesore of an unfinished stadium a few hundred yards away from Brunson, on the same creek nonetheless. Those are your foolish justifications for a bad decision. Your vote tonight is solely about your tolerance for health risks for our children. A vote for being the first elementary school built on a contaminated site in North Carolina is irresponsible and more simply dumb. And remember your voting rules. If you abstain from voting, your vote defaults to in favor of the motion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kim Woody.
Good evening. Please excuse me if I get a little emotional, because I'm very passionate about this. My name is Kim Woody, and I'm a teacher at Brunson Elementary. I come to you tonight about the New Brunson. This is my 25th year at Brunson. I love the school, I love the community, and above all, our amazing students. The hardworking taxpayers voted in 2016 to build a New Brunson, and here we are yet again. Myself and the rest of the Brunson faculty and the families that we have met with are ready to see this project move forward. I have seen people make media posts saying that we do not care about our kids if we move forward with this project, and that is absolute furthest thing from the truth. My own daughter attends Brunson Elementary School and will attend the New Brunson Elementary School. We have done our research, as it is public record. Please do us what is right for our students, and please move forward with this project. They deserve it and so will we. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Jordan.
Good evening. Sorry, it wasn't emotional until she just got up to speak. Good evening, Kaplan, board, Ms. McManus. I thought so many times this last couple of days of what I was going to come up here and say tonight, because this has been a long time coming, like 20 years. I mean, Alex, you were at Conoc as a student, and I was a teacher there. I mean, that's how long we've been talking about Brunson, okay? So yeah, we really need you guys to move forward with this project. I mean, being in a Brownfield is a choice that the school system doesn't have to make. You're doing it because you want to be safer, and we want to be more transparent, and we're doing what's right. We're not going to find anywhere, I mean, what are we going to do, throw away all of downtown land because it once was something? We have to learn how to remediate. That's what we have to do all the time in our school system today. I mean, every time a tile pops up at Brunson, we tape it off while somebody comes and removes it because it's asbestos. I mean, we're mitigating those things all the time from things that we didn't know about in the years past. We would not be putting our students at risk if we did, we wouldn't be doing that. We really, really need you guys to move forward with this tonight. It's been such a long time coming. Our students deserve it, we deserve it. The people that are speaking to you in favor of it are the ones that are actually part of the community and are listening to what our staff and our students want, and we really want to move forward with this project at Brunson. So please vote yes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comments. Next, we will have discussion items. We have four items tonight for discussion. First, Dr. Paula Wilkins, the chief academic officer, will update us on the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools preschool Head Start, Smart Start partnership, and pre-K priority model cohort.
That title was a long one.
That was.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent McManus. We have a whole crew of folks that want to support preschool, and we are very blessed and fortunate in our community to have so many partners that are invested in our children. And so there are kind of three parts to this update. The first part is just district update, where are we with preschool and preschool classrooms? And I'm going to invite Blanche Stevens. Oh, I was like, where is Blanche? I saw her to come up and join me for this overview. We have lots of partners that help us do this work. A big part of the work to continue to support our preschool is to continue to think about funding. We can have a commitment and knowing that we want to have access for every three- and four-year-old in our community, and notice I added three. We've been talking about four, but we need to go to three, too. But we have to have support to be able to do it. I know school system is one partner, but we have many partners in the space. And so after we give a district update, we're going to allow some of our partners to come and share about our partnership and how we continue to keep that momentum thriving and moving forward. So I'm going to turn over to Blanche.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm just going to do a quick overview. This has our overview, the mission and vision, we always, always look at development-appropriate play-based and child-centered learning, no matter what we do. Our program includes the Exceptional Children's Division, the Title I program. We also have collaborative classrooms with Head Start and NC pre-K, as well as private pay throughout our district. She told me to hit the button, and which button am I hitting? Thank you. This is all very new for me. Preschool priorities, over the summer, we always do ongoing training for our leadership team, and that includes inclusive practices, inclusive instructional practices, I'm sorry, curriculum literacy, and development-appropriate practice. We also work on brading our preschool funds. The more funds we braid, the more children we can serve. So we're always looking at new and inventive ways to serve more children. And like I said, we're always moving to, to what is it, to create more inclusive settings that'll have more blended classrooms throughout the district. We only have 10 blended classrooms right now, so we're trying to increase that. This is just a brief overview of where the programs are and what type of programs there are. So in total, we have 94 classrooms district-wide. In the preschool program, we also have itinerant staff, we have itinerant speech-language pathologists that go out to the communities and homes and private preschools and serve children. And this year, we've increased our preschool itinerant staff because the need has increased, and we're serving more children in typical classrooms. So that's a plus. This is the update for the preschool enrollments for our regular ed classrooms. We have the capacity of 751 slots, and I have a slide update. Right now, we're at 615. So we're a little bit better, we're we're filling these, we're putting children in classrooms daily. We have with the new, the earlier start for school, we had a little bit of a hiccup because we started a couple of weeks early, but we're working through that with our partners, and we're adding children daily. The interesting thing, you'll see on the screen, some of the classrooms are full, but for example, at Kemble Farm, it's full. We have, what, 25 children there? I have 20 children on the waitlist that are waiting for a slot at Kemble Farm, and if somebody leaves or somebody moves, they would like to be placed there. They won't go anywhere else but Kemble Farm. So we have 20 parents waiting there. And at Union Cross, we're full, we have 32 children enrolled, but we have 18 parents, 18 children on the waitlist, just hoping that somebody changes their mind or moves. So the need is great, and the interest is great for that. This is your part, Ms. Wilkins, I think.
So as we continue to work, we know that our capacity exceeds the demand, but one of the things we continue to look at is what sites students are enrolled, and how can we leverage the sites that we have available, but also meet the capacity? When you look at some of the enrollment, they are under-enrolled, and we try to offer to many parents options where we can give them a seat now, and we don't always get a positive reception that parents want to enroll. So one of the pieces we're working on really, really hard is trying to get parents to see they can become a part of the school community, and their students can continue to enroll in those schools as well. But that continues to become a challenge. So as we look at those challenges, we have to think about the seats, capacity, and maximizing funding, and what do we do to make sure we can serve students when some sites are under-enrolled? The other piece is because of our partnerships, which is a whole nother conversation. I know it's complicated because we have so many people in the space to help us enroll our students. How do we create a system that is predictable for parents and all the steps that go along with it? We're continuing continually to work, continuing to work with our partners like pre-K priority to help us get the message out, as well as Smart Start to help support that as well. Some other pieces that we want to think about is how do we move to like a single portal where everything can be a one-stop shop? I know other communities have gotten there. I know we've had some initial conversation, and I know Smart Start might have some more updates on that as well. Thinking about how do we have additional support to think about district-wide programs and across access in every single area in our district? We still have more communities that need additional access. And then one of the things with some of our partners, such as Head Start, which provides site capacity within our schools, is thinking about funding. And so our community partners are looking at pay equity and support and how to continue programs when they want to continue to make sure that their teachers are provided a living and equitable wage. That still continues to be a challenge for us, and we're looking at how do we replace funding when partners are looking at how do they continue to help to support the teachers and to compete with the school system for pay as well? And then collaborating with our partners like Child Care Resource Network to help ensure support for childcare for our families that do have students enrolled in preschool. We have very few sites that offer childcare services for our preschool students. Kimberly Park is one site that does do that. We don't have enough that have that support service for our families. So I want to move on to think about the pre-K priority, because I think unique to our community, we have had a commitment from partners to say, we are in this together to make the experience better for our families and for our children. And so as a result, this has now been in existence. Am I wrong? I'm looking at somebody six, seven? Seven? Officially seven, okay. I was like, am I right? Because my time blurs between being a principal and now a district leader. I can't remember how much time. But this partnership has been committed to be a community commitment to ensure access to pre-pre-K for our four-year-olds. And so very grateful for all the partners. And if you are a partner to help support the pre-K priority, I want to ask you all to stand, please, because we have lots here. Don't be shy. So these are the faces that commit every month to come together to advocate in service of thinking about how do we continue to galvanize our community to help our students? And I would like for us to ask Dr. Finney from Smart Start to come up and share some partnership updates from Smart Start and just some wins in our community around pre-K.
All right. Good evening, board members. Good evening, Superintendent McManus. Thank you for having us here. And Gleneesh Highsmith, our vice president, she actually is not here, she has another appointment, so we'll have somebody here to fill in some of her communication. Just want to give you also just some background about Smart Start, because many people kind of confuse it with Head Start, state agencies and so forth, but actually, we've been in our community for over 30 years, and primarily, our role as a state person who mandates people to actually do the convening for early childhood in this particular community. So part of our role is really focused on all the children. So we pretty much support over 13,000 children ages zero to five each day, and on average, about 82% of the population of zero to five receives some type of services from Smart Start, with our biggest program being our Donnie Parton Imagination Library. Everybody heard of that program? Okay. And have a strong partnership with the school district. You have a very good leader as a superintendent. One thing I always tell her is that my job is to make you all's job a lot easier, because if we don't do well from zero to five, it impacts the rest of the school system. And from our philosophy, our school and our readiness really starts with the parents. So we believe in that cradle-to-the-grade perception, so we make sure that we start even with pregnant mothers to make sure that you teachers have a very good job when they come in. And our partnership with you is about a 17-point, about $1.7 million partnership to contract out with the school district to do a phenomenal job in NC pre-K, but we also do some other work with you as well. I'd like to recognize Dr. Millen, who serves on our board, but she also is the person who helps determine how these funds go out to the community. What we have is an actual committee made up of community people who decide how we disperse about $10 million in early care and education. We have committees that actually determine how that money goes out, and she actually chairs that on behalf of the superintendent. Oops. Sorry about that. I want to talk about our cohort in NC pre-K. We primarily support directors, we actually do orientations with your principals in elementary schools, because it's really important for us that an elementary school principal knows the difference between an early childhood teacher and an elementary school teacher, because there's different, there's different pedagogy when it comes to that transition, and we want to make sure that that principal is aware that we need to support those four-year-olds in those classrooms. And some of the things we also do, we also have a health component that looks at the health throughout the county, particularly the childcare health, and that's with supporting Head Start, but also supporting private childcare in the school district. I'm trying to go all the way back to yours, Dr. Wilkins. I'm just going to go over, your video popped up, if that's going to play. Here you go. And this is something we're pretty excited about. We're the only ones in the state of North Carolina, and this is the first trial in the state of North Carolina where you have both the city and the county investing in what we consider the most important asset in our particular community, and that's early care and education. And what we did, we established a cohort with the county contributing $3.7 million, and the city contributing another $350,000, but also the city contributed another $800,000 to support infant and toddler care. Because one thing we thought of Smart Start is that it's critical for us that four-year-olds is great, but we think that zero to four is better, and that's a, that's a, that's a piece of this community that's actually missed, is that zero to three. So the city invested another $800,000 to support the infant and toddler care. And some of this cohort you talked, we talked about earlier, we kind of looked at the experts of the people who really have the vision of what this community needs for early care and education, but also the expertise, and that's how we came up with some of the partners. I Hispanicly provide translation services, not just for Spanish, but actually, we have about nine different languages that they're working with and translating. Our family services through expertise is family engagement. So each one of our partners will be found, they actually need some parental support. So those in the cohort, even if you're public schools, we actually have a person who helps support the parents, but also even a program to help support the dads that are involved in our particular cohort. We have Child Care Resource Center and Smart Start, who does professional development and technical assistance. So all of these, these people in the cohort actually have some people that coach them throughout the system. We also make sure specifically the private childcare industry, who do not have the same resources, has a research-based and evidence-based curriculum and assessment tool. And we make sure everything is aligned with the public schools. So right now, if you want in this cohort, can it, can it transition into kindergarten and first grade, understanding the same type of education and curriculum in that process and that transition? Because you always thought that a public school was very critical. And then we have Forsyth Futures, who manages our data. But we also went outside with a public bid to actually do an evaluation. One thing that was critical when we worked with the county, board of county commissioners, to have someone on the outside evaluate us and evaluate us as a community, to give us a real fair picture of how we look like in our community, and you'll see some of that data coming up. At Smart Start, our main role is the administrators, the monitoring, but also with the, with the people who actually meet and collect the whole group to make sure they're implementing this project in fidelity as it relates to what the state requires, what the school system requires, but also what the partners require as well. And these are just some of the outcomes and resources, because one thing I did miss that's unique in our state, we're also the only state who has an equity manager. One thing we thought that was very critical in this process is to have someone here that's external, that's with the school system, to get some of that qualifications from your department, to really look at equity and distribution and make sure that children are treated right and fair, that fund distribution is right and fair, but also we're able to look at an equitable landscape within our community as it relates to preschool services for all children and families, regardless of what you look like or how much money you make. We're very glad that the school district took the lead on that. There's some of our focus on equity. We actually came up with some, some new tools that we're actually going to share at the state conference. The school district, as well as Smart Start, are going to be presenting some of our work actually statewide to a statewide conference with the National Association for Educational Young Children. So we're really glad that it's been accepted to really look at some of the work that we're doing in Forsyth County throughout the state. These are some of the locations, and some of this varies, and some of our biggest challenges that we had was really staffing. Anybody have staffing issues with, with education and teachers? Yeah, we saw that that was a big challenge as well with, with us across the whole gamut, whether you were private childcare, whether you were Head Start, whether you were public schools. There's been a specific issue on staffing with teachers, and we're also doing some research on that. Some of it is quite obvious, but some of the research that we are able to evidence is that the position of teachers is is that, uh, the position of teachers is, is not as respected as it should be. So some people aren't applying for those jobs on top of the fact that we're not paying them the wage of the work that they earn. You all agree to that? So one thing we put in here that's different, we have a workforce component as well because we did not think that this would be successful without doing something for teachers. So what we do specifically for this particular cohort for teachers, it's about threefold. Uh, we offer retention bonuses for two years to keep you here. Uh, we also do an equitable pay study, which we make sure that private childcare and Head Start teachers are making equitable pay to public school teachers. And the third thing component we do is education. So we get them also college degrees. And you'd be quite surprised at how many private childcare teachers have a bachelor's degree but are making only about $13 to $14 an hour. So part of what our concept was to give them an equal pay. So there were some teachers who got as much as $3,000 to $5,000 a year in bonus. Some got more than that. But our intent was really to show some of the equitable pay when it relates to private childcare, but also when you look at the qualifications that the state gives, they're very similar, but the pay is just not the same with childcare. These are some statistics as we talk about salaries. See with the private, you're talking they're worth $25,000 to $30,000. North Carolina pre-K program, that's the program that we fund the majority. And under parity, we find that 100% of all of the league teachers in the whole county were under parity with the public schools. So we had to come up with a $439,000 to support those teachers. But also something else that Smart Start does is we also fund another $450,000 of our state money on top of that. So we give out close to about a million dollars already just in wage that goes directly to teachers in private childcare. And that's a state program that's funded by the state that goes to Smart Start, that we're able to look at every single teacher and teacher assistant's salary and give them a wage parity difference to make sure that they can get their salaries up. So we do that in addition to the program that we're talking about. What I'm going to introduce now is actually Daniel. He's our Director of Workforce and Innovation. He's going to continue the section of workforce. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Finney. Uh, so yeah, just kind of piggybacking, uh, a lot of the work that we do is in that parity area. And so that kind of brought these statistics out, um, as we look at the comparison between the Westside County School System salaries and our salaries in private childcare. So one of the things we were really excited about, um, from this project, actually in working with the teachers, uh, one thing we find is that if we pay them, they will stay. Right? Um, but another thing is that if they feel supported, they'll be more willing to stay. So, uh, looking at how we provided coaching supports, we provided, uh, professional development support, trainings. Uh, like Dr. Finney mentioned, we, uh, worked to pay with Forsyth Tech, uh, for students to complete their associate degrees. And last year, we had one big success where we actually had one of our teachers who was working as an assistant teacher in NC pre-K finish with her associate degree. Um, now, uh, one of the things that's big about that is that she had a bachelor's degree before that. So now with her bachelor's degree and then the associate in early childhood, she shot right up from being, you know, from an assistant teacher to being at the same level credentially-wise as a level 11, uh, North Carolina educator. So we're very excited about that. So we worked very hard to keep our teachers, to support those teachers. And as you can see, one of the big things that came out of that is that we retained 85% of our teachers over the course of the school year. So that was really big, and we were very excited about that.
All right. Thank you. That concludes our, concludes our report. Subject to any questions that you all may have. Thank you.
Board Member Crowley?
Um, yes. It, it was referenced that the literacy and math skills dramatically increase with children who participated in pre-K versus not. Can you, can you put a numerical value on dramatically?
Okay. We're going to get the official data from our evaluator, but what we found is that our teaching strategy's goal is the assessment tool that we use. And that's the preferred one that's used nationwide, but also what the state recommends. What we found is through the cohort is that many people cannot afford that. It's a very expensive product. So we pay for that. And what that does is look at the six required domains, look at in early childhood around literacy, English, and reading. So what that does, when the child first comes in, most of our kids pretty much come at a, at a low rating. And then we look at mid-year process, and at the end of the year process, it really comes out around June to get those reports. So I don't have this specific data, because I don't have my, my VP was over that here, but it went up significantly. But what we appreciated about it the most is that it was all equitable, too. We didn't see much variances in the private childcare, the school district, nor did we see that in the Head Start. And a lot of that was attributed to having the additional coaches' support, but also having the equipment and the tools to actually do that and report it. So many teachers are doing the work, but those assessment tools are quite challenging in early childhood. So we, we also involved in training the teachers, really all of them, including the public schools, in understanding that tool.
Okay. Thank you.
But thank you for the question.
Board Member Kate?
This may not be for you. This may be for Paula and her team. But, um, you mentioned two, um, of our schools that have waitlists. Is that the only two, or do we have more that have waitlists?
Yes, Paula.
It was Blanche, and she's gone now. Is she gone? Oh, is she? There she is.
I was like, that would be cool. I know the name of her. She was waitlisted, and I know she kept the exact number, so she could hear that when that was.
We currently have 12 schools that have waitlists.
Okay.
And...
Go ahead.
Are you going to ask something?
I, I do have a follow-up question, but you can go ahead.
Um, Bolton has a waitlist of eight. Cables Creek has a wait, a waitlist of three. D's Latham has a waitlist of one. Griffith has a wait, and that's a Head Start collaborative classroom. They have a waitlist of nine. Kimmel Farm I talked about, Conuc has a waitlist of nine. Um, Old Town has a waitlist of four. Ro Hall has a waitlist of five. And they have one slot available. Um, Smith Farm has a waitlist of three. South Fork is full. They have a waitlist of 15. Union Cross again is full, has a waitlist of 18. And Waukertown is full with a waitlist of six. And with that waitlist, we, as, as Dr. Wilkins said, we do try, we have other openings, and we try to offer those locations. Sometimes we can convince parents to go to those locations where there are openings, but a lot of times they said, no, we'll, we'll just wait to see if somebody changes their mind or if something opens.
And that is, that is my follow-up, is that are they giving reasons for why they, there? Is it due to transportation? Is it due to, do they give the reason why they need that particular school? I, I guess I'm asking because if we can find the route, is there, you know, a way to...
Well, a lot of it is my older children went there.
Okay.
Something is familiar after with the school. Um, and they just want it in their area. So like if I have an offering at Cook or it's not close, doesn't work with their job schedule or things like that. But a lot of it is my, all of my children have gone to that school. I want my younger child to go there, or I'll just stay where I am until that slot comes open. And for the parents that, when they say, um, transportation is the issue, we always work to, if we can't get their first choice, to get something where it's in walking distance or it's not that far.
Okay.
So we do try to offer the other. Trust me, we try to offer as much as we can.
I'm sure. I just was curious.
Yeah, it, it's interesting, and some parents will just wait it out. They'll wait it out. Sometimes their openings in January, because parents may, change their mind or whatever, but they will wait it out.
Gotcha.
They will wait it out. And we place all year, so.
Thank you.
Um, Board Member Brown Gaither?
Okay, you said Old Town had a waitlist of four, but am I wrong?
Old Town has a waitlist of four, but we have a, we have a collaborative classroom with Head Start there, and the openings are in the Head Start classroom. And when we have that opening, that means they have to meet the criteria, the Head Start guidelines. And not all families meet those guidelines.
Because I was looking at it, and it said that Old Town had a capacity of 50, but 40 were placed.
Forty, uh, for the EC and the Title I classes, the 10 that are opening are at the Head Start class. And they have to meet that Head Start criteria. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Board Member Watts?
So I am a very strong proponent of zero to four. And so I have a story that I want to share, but, um, but also how can we continue to leverage our community and other partners to understand the importance of expanding to a three-year-old and even going further? How can we, I don't know who can answer that question, but we need to figure out how we can more leverage it and sustain it over time. Then I have a story I want to share.
Okay. Let me answer you guys.
Well, for my part, the only three-year-olds we serve right now are in the exceptional children's program. And for those children, they need, we need to have, serve all three-year-olds because the best models are typically developing tiers. So if we can expand on that, that's important. I know numbers, we have huge numbers in our three-year-old program, but I'm going to let him.
Okay. It's a couple ways. There, there are some communities such as, say, for example, Durham, but also even Mecklenburg, where they're, they're doing universal three-year-olds. Like, we're kind of behind with the pre-K for four. That's something that's really been done probably a few years ago, even in our state and other communities. But most local communities either have a local board or taxi base that actually funds pre-K in zero to three, or the local county government where they actually fund it, which is happening now. Uh, but the other thing that you can do, particularly with our subsidies program, they did change some of that model. We're actually able to get more additional dollars for subsidy dollars for those with three-year-olds, but that's a different type of structure. Uh, the other, as it relates to the county, that's why we did the approach with the city, is that when we're approaching the local government, we should really be looking out for all children. Although pre-K is priority, there's far more resources out for four-year-olds than it is for zero to three, but also it's not cost-effective. And I ran into a parent the other day who's spending $2,200 a month for their one-year-old. So she opted to quit her job. So you're also impacting an entire workforce market, which is why we have to have a workforce piece in there, but really focus on all children. That's kind of what Smart Start looks at. And we do a lot of advocating on the state level as it relates to state funding, but also even on the federal level as it relates to federal funds coming into our specific community. But also whenever there's opportunities for the state and federal, our main job is really to bring in the resources here in this community and then allocate them out to the community, not as much as to do the work, but to really support the service of what the community actually needs. I also want to respond to your question about the literacy, too. So I did get that research about the differences. Okay. As it relates to the literacy development, at the beginning of 2023 year, 46% of all the children were below expectations in literacy. 54% were meeting, and less than 1% were above. And by the end of the year, only 8% were below expectations, 72 met, and 20% were above. So literacy, I want to give the, the staff and the teachers, they did a very good job because that's a critical one. But something also interesting as it relates to math, 60% were below, 39% were meeting, and 1% was above. But by the end of the year, there were only 14%, and 64 were meeting and 22% were above. Now, that's just within the first year. And we're doing these projects, the first year is really the most difficult. Uh, normally this is a three-to-five-year process, but we really only have about a two-and-a-half-year process for this, to do some type of transformational change. So we're very glad that through this complex partnership, that we're able to see significant changes within that first year. But also you'll see some of the transitioning, the changes, because we're going to follow some of these kids when they get into kindergarten. And our goal is to really look at the third-grade benchmark to see where some of these children react that started in this cohort program. Thank you.
I just want to share real quick that, uh, one reason why I'm a strong proponent, I'll never forget my Head Start teacher, Doris Ann Sullivan, who gave me the first time a sandbox to play in to find letters of the alphabet. And that experience allowed me to, to get ready for school. So I will always, always support Head Start, four-year-old, three-year-old, because I know what it did for me as a jumpstart to schooling. And Doris Ann Sullivan was that teacher that I remember over many, many, many years ago.
There's nothing wrong. I remember my Head Start teacher, Ms. Gleason. Uh, when I was going through with the Head Start program, that was the best meals that I had. So other things that preschool environment gives you, particularly when you look at equitable distribution and funding, is to some of these children, just like you see in public schools, that's the only healthy meal. But the additional thing that we add in here is the health piece that we add in this particular cohort, because what we found as well, if those kids are not healthy, if they're not getting dental screenings, they're not going to be healthy, healthy in class and learning either. So we make sure that this model is very comprehensive and very similar to the comprehensive model that we have with Head Start.
Vice Chair Bohannon?
Thank you. So, uh, just a couple of things. And I think this first question is about the, I think it's the second slide in the deck, uh, that has the, the list of the schools for pre-K. Um, and this is just from my own knowledge, because I'm just trying to gain some clarification. So that list, is that just four-year-old? Is that just like four-year-old?
This is all four-year-olds?
Okay. Um, the reason why I asked is because I know that... Yes, that, yeah, 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 that was, yeah.
Oh, thank you.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't mean to, you know, sorry to... Oh, I'm sorry, it's the four, it's the fifth one.
Now, those are all four-year-olds. The slide before it has a list of all of the preschool programs.
Okay. But not the locations, I guess?
No.
Because I know we have, we still have, like, we have a three-year-old EC program at, like, Special Children's School. Like, there are some other kind of...
Right, there are eight preschool classrooms at Special Children's School. They're, they're considered at one of our developmental day, and they're one of our licensed program. We have like 17 licensed classrooms. And the, the Special Children's School and the Children's Center are the developmental day centers that are licensed.
Okay. Can I, can we get the numbers? Can, so I see the numbers in like the slide after that, but can we get the actual numbers for EC, too? Like, be, not, not right now.
Yes.
No, not right this minute.
Yes, I can get to you, yes. I have that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Next, Katie Key, Director of School Nurses, will update us on the Atrium Health Levine Children's School-based Virtual Care.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent McManus. Today, I'm here to give an update on, um, our school-based virtual care that is provided by Atrium Health Levine Children's Hospital. So as Sheila Thorpe, our Director of Social Work, mentioned before, that we use our telemedicine services as an initiative, um, to decrease chronic absenteeism. Um, and so we really like this program and hope that we can continue to do it, um, so that we can keep our kids in school, um, and keep them healthy. So before I do a little background, I just want to introduce my, um, wonderful, uh, team members here. The, uh, this is Sam McGinnis and Patsy Amanda Fisher. They are from the Atrium team, um, and I've had the pleasure of working with them for the past two years. Um, and, and they have really helped us, uh, get this ball rolling with our school-based, uh, health services. Um, and so just to give you a short, uh, background, uh, they were given a grant from the North Carolina DHHS, uh, for them to provide telemedicine, telemedicine services at six elementary schools for two years. And so that started in 2022, 2023, uh, school year. And you can see there the six elementary schools that they were at. Uh, they also, uh, we added in, um, Ashley Elementary School in 2023, 2024. So, uh, the services that they can provide are onsite acute care visits for non-emergent medical needs. Um, some of the things they can do, uh, they can be seen by a provider virtually, and, um, medication can be prescribed, sent to the pharmacy, the parent can pick it up on their way home from work. Um, sometimes, uh, they can have, need testing, like strep testing, they can do that, um, at the school, uh, with the telepresenter. And, um, there are a lot of common conditions that you can see here that they can, uh, see a student for, and, um, they can usually determine whether they're contagious or not. And if they're not, they can go back to class, um, even though they may not want to.[1744.63] They may want to go home. So some of you had the pleasure of actually seeing the demonstration. We had the team come and they brought their tools and you got to see, look inside the ear and. But for those of you that don't know, briefly, how it works is a student's not well, not feeling well at school, they have a, what we call a telepresenter that can come out to the school. They will connect, after getting permission from the parent, they will connect with a healthcare provider virtually. The parent can also join in, so if they're at work, they can join in as well. And the provider performs an examination, just like they would in the office. They're just using tools and they're able to hear and see like they would be if they were in a health office. Again, if it's minor and not contagious, then the student and staff members can also be seen, can go back to class or work. And then they will, if they're not Atrium, they're not their primary care provider, obviously. So they can send that information to their primary care provider to let them know what's going on with the student, if they have a new condition or new diagnosis. If they don't have a primary care provider, then they help find them one in our community. So the first year, we were in the six elementary schools. And you can see here, we had a total of a hundred and seventy visits total for those six schools. We averaged about five visits per week. This past last school year, twenty-three, twenty-four, we increased and had two hundred and seventy-five visits, which was about eight visits per week. So while we had a really great jump up in visits, we really aren't where we want to be yet. And so other districts that are providing these services are averaging about twenty to thirty visits a week. So we would like to be right up there with those other districts. So the plan for this year, the grant funding ended. It was a two-year grant. And Atrium Health Levine's Children has offered this service to us again, at no cost to the district, to help give us time to really increase the usage of this, of these services. And without the grant stipulations, we were able to expand to six additional schools to provide these services. So you'll see here, these are the six schools that we have chosen. They, the team has met with those schools and the principals, and we've already had visits from those schools in the first couple of weeks of school. So we're hoping that this will increase the usage and kids will be able to stay in school.
Does anybody have any questions? Yes. Excuse me, Board Member Brown Gaither?
I have, just remind me, in my aging mind, how did we select the schools that are a part of this?
Okay, so in the beginning, when we had just the six elementary schools, we were trying to, we did look at absentee rates. We also looked at schools that had a lot of kids with health conditions, chronic health conditions. And then we were kind of limited to trying to get them close enough together because we have the telepresenters. At the time, we had two, I think. And so they have to go between the schools. And so the wait time, we didn't want the wait time for the students to wait for a provider to be too long. And so those were the, those six schools are kind of all, were kind of all in the South and East. And then when we did the, when we added the six new schools, we looked at the same kind of things. Their absentee rates, we looked at, you know, schools that had the highest number of absentee rates. Schools that, we, we were trying to get them relatively in the same area or on the same campus, but we were able to spread out a little bit more because we have three, three telepresenters now. So they're able to move a little bit more. We also looked at schools that are not currently, they don't currently have our School Health Alliance that is on campus or served by a mobile clinic. So that kind of took away some of the, we wanted to kind of spread out the availability of services.
Okay, and the reason I ask that, I just wonder, because we haven't gotten to that amount, maximum amount that we would love to have per week. And I'm wondering if we did a different group of schools, would we get closer to the number than what we're getting now? That was why I was asking that question.
And so one of the things that we did do different is that we had only elementary schools last time. And some of our, even our nurses throughout the years, I mean, throughout the last two years would have said to me, I really wish we had this in my high school because I have kids that are just going home and they could be seen. So we did expand, and in these, the new six schools, we, I think there's one high school and two, two or three, go back to it. Oh, sorry. Two or three middle schools. So we wanted to see if some of these older, some of the older kids might utilize these services a little bit more. Sometimes with our elementary school kids, you know, the parents want to be there with them. They may not want to do over the, you know, tele, they might want to take them to their primary provider. And so we're hoping that this, and I know the very first week that we started, East Forsyth High School was one of the first ones to use it, so.
Board Member Coon?
This is a refresh my, my mind question as well. Can this only be used for students and families that have insurance?
No.
Okay.
He has the extensive knowledge of this. It can be suits without insurance as well.
Yeah, so the services are available regardless of ability to pay. So we follow the Atrium Health Levine Children's Financial Assistance Model. And so we have financial assistance available to our families, up to four hundred percent at the federal poverty level. And then this service is also a hundred percent covered under North Carolina Medicaid. So students that have North Carolina Medicaid, which we know from our history of school-based virtual care is about seventy percent of the students we serve, they have no financial cost or obligation for the services.
Okay, so that brings me around to my next piece of my question. Do we offer any type of translator service for our parents who may be un or underinsured? And how are we communicating to parents about this? Because oftentimes, some of our un or underinsured parents may be leery of these type of things. And if we're not communicating well or properly, it may decrease. So how are we decrease the usage of it? So how are we communicating to families about the service?
So we do have one telepresenter that is Spanish, speaks Spanish. And I'm not really sure about, I think they're able, if they need to connect with someone else, right?
We have the ability to add in a virtual interpreter for the visit. So whatever language, we cover, you know, really probably the top twenty or thirty most common languages. So we have that capability. And then we also have a bilingual provider that does some school-based virtual visits as well. And so as we have Spanish-speaking families that present wanting to receive care, typically our bilingual provider, if available, will kind of take those visits and help just have more fluid conversations with our families.
Vice Chair Bohannon?
So just a couple of questions. I think the first is about kind of the parental authorization. So are parents required to authorize it each time? So yes, okay, all right. And so how, what does that process look like in terms of, you know, child comes and says, I'm sick? Or they go to the office and they say, I'm sick. Is, you know, the adult or whoever in the school, they're calling the parent and saying, what? Could you just give me an example, like, how that is supposed to work?
Yeah, so we, they do have a consent form that they send out the beginning of the school year to all the students to hopefully get that signed by parents, to get participation. It kind of moves the process along a little bit easier or faster. But when a student comes to the office, they, they will, the staff in the front office or whoever, maybe the nurse or whoever the kind of liaison is between the school system and Atrium, they will contact the telepresenter and then the telepresenter will get permission. Is it? The school contacts the parent first to get permission, to let them know that, you know, they're sick. Would you like to use this service? Whether you have a consent on file or not, but then they can get that verbal consent for that visit. And so then every time, even if they have that consent form signed, they're going to contact the parent every time to say, we're going to do this visit or would you like us to do this visit and use this service?
Okay. And so then I think my next question, I don't think you all, you all may not be able to answer. I think it might be for the superintendent or for kind of you to designate, you know, who to answer. I wanted to Board Member Coon's point, kind of drill down a little bit more in terms of, is there a, for the schools where this is happening, is there sort of a, what's the understanding around? Are, are, are people kind of plugging the service in terms of, like, if a kid comes and says, I'm sick? Is, do people know to suggest or to recommend that program first? Or is that, is that?
So one thing we talked about when we had the, the meeting, when was that, a month ago or so? Yeah. Was to make sure that, to meet with the principals specifically of this group of schools and the nurses that might be serving so that we can do a better job. Because I think a lot of this is that encouragement. And so, yeah, so I'm not sure if that meeting's been scheduled yet, but I know that is something following this, if it hasn't been scheduled yet, that we are going to do. Because it really is that onsite, really pushing it with parents that makes the biggest difference. I think that's what we had spoken about.
Hello?
Yes, I went out and met individually with each school principals and other key designees. The school nurses were available, they also joined. So as part of that comprehension, comprehensive meeting, we provide the demonstration and also the follow-up. There is an email sent out and there's actually a Google Drive now created for the schools that have our translated flyers in English and Spanish. We have a YouTube video in English and I am waiting the Spanish YouTube link that can also be shared with families as well as all the financial assistance information. But what we found most important is at the time of need because we communicate a lot with our families at open house and they're just intent on finding out teachers and classrooms and supplies that they don't think about their children getting sick. So at the time of need has been the most impactful way to, again, speak to families about the program. And we also, we always encourage schools that if the parent starts asking a lot of questions, just ask them if we can call. And we're happy to call the families in their native language to help them understand the program more and get the consent at that time.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Next, Andrew Craft, Director of Arts and Extended Learning. Excuse me. We'll discuss the memorandum of agreement of the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools and the Winston-Salem Symphony Partnership.
All right. Good evening again, members of the Board and Superintendent McManus. I'm excited because I'm here tonight to celebrate the long-established partnership between the district and the Winston-Salem Symphony, which has impacted thousands of students over the course of decades. The aforementioned MOA outlines the current partnership and provides details about the programs that are offered. But again, so this partnership has impacted thousands of students over decades and decades. Rachel and I were just talking outside about how far back did this go? We think into the seventies or sixties. And it's through various opportunities, in-school performances, performing ensembles for our student musicians and other educational opportunities that are available. And the primary partnership is laid out in three forms. There's the Mary Starling In-School Ensembles and Concert Series, which I know many of you have heard of. But also the Youth Orchestras Program, which is a series of youth orchestra ensembles for our student musicians, and the Piedmont Learning Academy for Youth or Play Music Program. And you were able to hear a sample of that earlier, right at the start of the meeting. So the Mary Starling Concert Series and In-School Ensembles, this is amazing. So what happens is every elementary school gets two in-school performances a year for fourth and fifth graders. So one year it'll be, it's, it's the four components that make up the symphony, brass, woodwind, strings, and percussion. So one year they will do two groups, and then the next year they'll do two groups. That way, all fourth and fifth graders will get to see all four groups. And again, this is twice in every elementary school. But then it gets better because in February, all fifth graders get to see the full Symphony Orchestra at Reynolds High School and for an incredible performance. So first they got to experience the interactive in-school concerts. They're a lot of fun. They'll do things like coming and let, let the kids play percussion. I know the Strings Ensemble will let a student actually compose a piece and they'll play it right there. But then when we get to the full Symphony Orchestra concert, it's like you're taking all the ingredients and you're putting it together. And it's, it's amazing. It's interactive, the kids are up moving, they get to follow along with, with the words and the music on the screen. But not only that, so you, you hear, you'll, you'll hear the standards. You'll hear Beethoven or, or Britain. You'll hear all those, but you'll also hear pieces and composers from Asia, Africa, Central America, South America, female composers, because we believe representation is important and our kids need to see that. So that's included in that. Again, it's an amazing, amazing opportunity. And I think it's also important that I shout out our Transportation Department, who is able to get all of our fifth graders to these four concerts over two days. That is a wonderful thing. So it's a labor of love and we really appreciate them for doing that. So that's the start. So the Mary Starling Concert Series. But it gets better because we also have the Youth Orchestras Program. And so these are after-school groups based on ability and instrumentation for our young musicians who are very serious about playing outside of the classroom. So we might have someone who starts in premier strings, but eventually ends in the youth symphony. And if you've ever been to any of these concerts, they are incredible. You will absolutely have a blast what these students are able to do. It's just a wonderful thing. Well, and then the Play Program. So the Play Program, in-school or after-school, depending on what the aims are. But it's designed to enhance music learning while positively impacting academic performance, particularly in literacy and mathematics. So the curriculum of the Play Program was developed by the Winston-Salem Symphony. The structured procedures and assessment rubrics are based on research and evaluation by the Wolf Brown Consulting Firm. So aside from playing music, they also do activities that support literacy, like having the students read, reading to the students, tracking left and right, reading music, which is shown by research to also assist with literacy, singing and so on. Not to mention just those important durable skills found in the portrait of a graduate with collaboration, critical thinking, personal responsibility. I mean, if, if you give a kid a violin, they have to learn responsibility, right? So again, just an incredible, incredible program. All the classes are taught by two professional teaching artists from the Winston-Salem Symphony. And so that's the Play Program. And so currently, the Play Program resides in these five areas, which are outlined on the MOA. Some differ from others, some in-school, after-school, a little bit of both. One is percussion, primarily strings, but catered to kind of fit the situation and working with the principal at that school based on what they want and how they want that to work. So in short, the MOA really, it really outlines three points. Number one, it formalizes the partnership that we already have. We realized that we had not brought it to you, so we wanted to show you that this is what we've been doing. These are the wonderful things we've been offering and working together to do. Express the district's interest to pursue funding opportunities to expand the Play Program. So my department, Arts Education Department, is working with the Grants Department to seek out funding sources to see how can we continue to build this program for our students. And last, just to celebrate this longstanding partnership between the district and the symphony. So I'm happy to answer any questions. And also with me tonight are Merritt Vale, the President and CEO of the Winston-Salem Symphony, and Rachel Watson, who is over the educational programs. So if I can't answer it, I'm sure they can, but are there any questions?
Board Member Brown Gaither?
My first question is, I have a couple of them.
That's fine.
My first question is, how did we determine which school offers which class? Because I noticed that Cook has percussion. And I would love for children that look like me to have the opportunity to learn strings. I think we are always thinking that we can do drumming, but I would love for the opportunity for children that look like me to have the opportunity to do strings.
Absolutely, and thank you for letting us be here tonight, and thank you, Andrew Craft. So it really comes down to, first of all, for us, because we've had such a strong partnership with the district for so long now, as we're expanding to these schools, it really comes down to building the relationships with the principals first and foremost. So we take time out of the day, weeks to, you know, connect with them, have meetings with them. And really with the Play Music Program, we're trying to target the underserved areas of Forsyth County, particularly the Title I schools. Because it's very important that, you know, for drumming, for example, that we look at, you know, the way that percussion and drumming with younger kids and speaking ties together and strengthens their reading and literacy. and speaking ties together and strengthens their reading, um, and literacy scores. Um, so that kind of answered your question, I guess we're more?
Well, I, I guess the reason I asked that question is because then we had weekly, make sure I'm understanding, we have weekly rehearsals of the strings at Paisley. Am I right? And so Cook is right there at Paisley, so I was like, oh, that would've made more sense to me. So that was one of the things I was wondering there. Then the second part, second question I had was program fees. And I saw here the program fees and the fees are only for students who take strings, am I correct? Because they get to get an instrument to take home to practice, to do whatever. And the students at Cook, because they're only doing percussion, obviously, they don't get to take a drum home, am I right?
Right, so, can I elaborate a little bit more on that? So, our non, the program is free, regardless if it's percussion or strings, it's free for all Title I students that attend Title I schools, in the schools that, um, that where we are currently. Um, for Cook, it is a brand-new program there and they are the only ones doing percussion at this time. Um, I mean, we just pre, we piloted the program last year, so we're hoping to expand eventually. I'm really close. Um, but for, uh, we have one non-Title I school that we offer the string program in. And again, the principal reached out to us, this is the former principal, um, Debbie McIntyre, who was there in 2017, and she wanted us to, um, you know, bring the program to her school, knowing that they're not, they're not a Title I, um, and that the parents would, um, pay a fee to allow the students to, um, you know, participate in the class, take the instrument home. But also knowing that the parents know upfront that a portion of the fees they pay to be in the, for their child to be in the program would go towards a child on scholarship or a child in need.
Board Member Coon?
I just wanted to say, um, I have gotten to experience the symphony, um, with the fifth graders um, a couple of times and it was amazing to watch. Um, I love the symphony myself, but to sit back and watch all of the, the little people, um, feel the music, you can literally see them feel the music. Um, and I would love to see us find a grant or something to expand. Um, to, uh, Board Member Brown Gaither's point, um, so that we can find the way to fund, um, ways for some of our underfunded, um, schools, um, to have access. Um, I do believe that needs to, we need to grow that program. And then, not just grow it at the elementary school level, but ensure that we can see it through to the feeder schools, um, once they leave elementary school. Um, and so that they can grow with that, because watching the, I mean, just watching them, it's amazing. Um, but to speak about Cook, I was able to, um, participate in their Harambe and they did their drum session, um, at the Harambe and it was amazing. And I don't know, I don't think anybody here was there the day I did it, but I liter, I bawled. Like, I was crying, I was very emotional because just watching these little people learn their drums and do their thing, I just, I had to share. Y'all are doing an amazing job.
Board Member Crowley?
Um, Mr. Craft and Winston-Salem Symphony people, thank you so much for bringing this program. Um, I would love to see it also expanded. Um, when I think about my own music education and how much it did mean for personal responsibility and discipline, um, there's a lot, a lot of days I remember I did not want to practice and, you know, you gotta get in your 30 minutes and then that turns into 45 minutes or an hour and then you get better and it, the rewards just keep coming from it. Um, and I, I think it absolutely ties to literacy and definitely math proficiency. Um, so I'd like to see it keep growing in our school system.
Okay, Vice Chair Bohannon?
Thank you. Um, this is probably not, um, this is more of sort of a general question, cause, but based on, like, just like Board Member McCrally, I'm having some nostalgia because my first introduction to music was my recorder in elementary school and, um, and, you know, I, I think, you know, I graduated from the recorder to the clarinet and then to the alto and then tenor sax and I just, you know, every child, you know, we always talk about co-curricular activities and how there are things that kind of keep you in the building. Um, of course, learning is what we want everybody to be there for, but the reality is, I think, um, there are things that you develop and you love and, and music was that for me. Um, and I think the earlier we start, the better. But I think to Board Member Brown Gaither's point, a lot of times, kids don't know what's available until they get exposed to it. And I, I think that's one of the reasons why it's, it's important for me that we, we, we try to make this a priority, um, to be able to expand it. Um, I think about the students in Cook and I think, you know, it, of course, you gotta start somewhere, but I want us to, to be intentional about that, because you can open up a child's world to so much. Um, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So we have one more item on our discussion. Uh, Thomas Krantz, our Chief Financial Officer, will discuss the fiscal year 2025 salary increase, salary schedule adoption.
Good evening. So as y'all are aware, when the state adopted their budget, uh, the legislature set aside a 3% raise, a 3% raise for all employees, but average on certified, so that's your key distinction. The classified, it's a 3% straight up, whatever they make, there's 3%. On the certified, we follow exactly what the state publishes and that, that raise can top anywhere from about 4.5% to about 1.5% with an average, again, of 3% is set aside by the state. Now, that 3% costs about $2.4 million and that's all benefits, that's everything that you would have to it. So it gives you a pretty good idea of where the dollar amounts are. Any questions about, before I address two other subjects?
Vice Chair Bohannon?
Thank you. Yes, so we receive, so if the state, I think last year, based on the previous, let's just go with the basic bachelor teacher schedule for a first-year teacher, last year was, I think, 45, 40, 45, $4,500, I think, with the, but that includes the supplement. So, without the supplement, um, it was something less than that. I don't have that number in front of me, but I guess what I'm trying to understand is the amount that the increases, the increase is varied based on what, experience?
It's experience and, and just to move on the step. So say, for example, for a teacher with just a bachelor degree, and I say just a bachelor, that's what I have, but I mean, just a bachelor degree. In '24, their base was $45,400 before any supplements. This year, that salary moved from $45,400 to $47,400, which is a $2,000 increase of 4.41%. Okay? Now, if I'm a teacher at, let's say I moved to step 15. So I go from 12, where I was making $59,490, now I'll go to step 15 and make $61,420. That increase was 3.2%. But, when I go to step 16, and this is the way the state sets up their schedule, I go from the 60,000, I go from the $61,420 where I'm gonna make $61,520, only got a 1.5% raise, which the state does when people get to step 15 and step 24. And on the salary scale, it's even a little bit worse, because it's more than a five, would you agree? About every five steps is where they make the change. So, if you looked at a schedule, it would be, there's no, you know, you would think everybody's kind of flat, we're all, you know, whatever it is at that point, it's all over the point. I mean, if you just read, on step 10, it's a 3.49% increase. Step 15 is a 3.24% and then 16 drops to 1.52%. It's all over the place, but that's the way the schedules, the scales are made.
Do you have a question? Um, yes, Board Member Coon?
So, um, I think that you're probably gonna address what I, um, am gonna bring up, but two things. One thing, I just, um, it is hard for me to, um, digest this kind of information um, when it comes a little later than we're typically used to.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I, I, this is my first time seeing it. Um, and that is a little frustrating to me.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I'm just, I want to be very honest about that, because I have a hard time voting for things when I have not had time to digest them. And, um, I really, I have tried to express this in multiple ways at multiple times, that getting things in advance is extremely important. Um, to that note, um, I think you, you might be addressing the Article 46, but, um, where are we on the market study?
We're probably about 75% done. Um, and we, we just have to find the time. I mean, right now, I've got people working pretty much six days a week and I'm working seven. There's not any more max.
That goes back to my question, are we understaffed in our finance department? If we are overworking our staff to the point that we cannot get something done that we have needed done for over a year, do we have the staff to efficiently and effectively run the department?
You've got, the thing that's driving this is one-time projects you've got, number one. Number two, you don't have the space. Where finance is located at can't expand.
Okay.
And, and that's unfortunate, but what you're really looking at is those projects won't end until June of 2026.
So, Tommy, are you referencing the business modernization?
So what's gonna happen, Ms. Coon, on that one, is to give us the bodies to get through, you know, all the steps we gotta do. We'll be partnering probably with Robert Half to provide, so like when we run parallel, you know, like accounts payable. We'll have our team leading both the, the, the old system and the new system, but then our team driving the new system. And, and, but then, once that project's complete, those staff members of Robert Half will go away.
Right, and I, I can understand when we get to that point, but right now, we're at a point where we have needed something to allow us to get funding to help our, our certify, or our classified staff. And, and we've been waiting for this for now over a year. And to me, I, I can't help but be extremely frustrated, not just as a board member, but for our staff. And we are also missing money from our current um, budget with the county commission, based on this as well.
Yeah, but that could only be spent on the salary. Cannot be spent on the general operating, you're gonna have the same restriction there as you do with the Article 46.
Vice Chair Bohannon?
Thank you. Um, so, to, to the point I was trying to make and, um, and I'm sorry, interrupted Board Member Coon, but you were referencing Tommy when you say the, the projects, you're talking about the business modernization?
Mm-hmm.
So, I, I think that the, and I guess my, to that point, I, I thought that we had, had kind of baked into the cost for the business modernization. I know that there were some things that we needed to do kind of on your, on staff's end, but did we not bake into the business modernization cost some additional support?
Correct, and it, and it was intended to cover when we start doing the parallel runs.
Okay.
Right now, you have some training that's taking place, but it's very, three days here, two, a couple of weeks off, three days, a couple of weeks off.
Right.
So, you can't get, you, you cannot justify hiring somebody, even on a temp basis and say, I'm gonna have them just sitting there. That, that, that doesn't, and I know y'all aren't saying that.
Right.
But, it's just the timing of when you're gonna start it.
Okay.
Because it's a lot of money.
Okay, so, and I think to that point, the, and of course, as I'm sure you can understand, and, and when we have individuals who are coming and they email us, I've gotten several emails, people have come up, when the budget negotiations were happening with the county earlier this year, it was sort of brought up as a, as a sort of point of kind of contention where, you know, people were looking for the salary study. I think that we just need to kind of be definitive about, you know, that and maybe place that as a priority, so that we can get that.
Yep, it is. I sp, I met with the county manager the end of last week and we will be taking that forward within the next, within the next two months. So Tommy said he's 75% done. Last year mid-year, Tommy and his team and Chris and his team focused on the local longevity. And so that was a major priority for classified employees toward, I think it was toward the middle of last year. Since then, the second half of last year, he was focused on the market study. Um, I know that he's been probably leading a lot of that by himself with some of his key team members, but we just spoke about it earlier this week and we are taking it, and I spoke to Chantel about it as well, that we are going to be bringing that forward to the county within the next two months. So it's August by, no later than the end of September. Beginning of October, one of their county commissioners means we'll be bringing that forward. So before that, we'll obviously share it with our board, so that you can see it, but we just have discussed this this week.
Okay, and then before you move on, Tommy, I did just, for clarity, the total annual in the new study, the new proposed study, includes the Article 46 and the loc, the, all the supplement, right?
Wait, okay, I got confused there, so.
So this number, the total at the top of the study, so if we scroll to the top where it says total, total annual, that is inclusive of the supplement, the supplements?
That's correct. It's the sum of the monthly base plus the supplement gets you to the total monthly. Times 10 will get you to your annual salary number.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
It does not include, I want to bring up, so this, Tommy, can you please clarify? Cause I want us to be very transparent with that. It does not include the additional dollars, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the, the Article 46 that were in the reserve from last year, that the board did say we wanted to get that out and the board was worried that, could we do that reoccurring and we said, yes, we could? That's not added in yet, correct?
That is correct, because what'll happen is, on your Article 46, so you have two components to it. You have the component that the district puts in. So the district's funding 19-plus million, almost 20 million. Those go in first, okay? Then, we get from the state, from the county, that quarter cent sales tax. That number, the very first year, was about $17 million. When it did, there was $7 million that was in the first dollars of the district. When everything was paid out and settled at the end of the year, there was $7 million of money that was col, that was paid in from the county that the, the, the supplements had been paid out. So we put it, you set it up in a reserve, because it, it's not intended, you can't use it for any purpose other than a supplement. Then, the next year comes, first dollars get used, or what? The count, the state, the school system, sorry about that. The second one is what you've set aside for reserve. And then, if you still needed more, the third one is the new money that the county has forwarded, forwarded to the school system. That reserve is going down. We ended last year somewhere about $3.5 million, rough. Where we're at, if we continue to collect 20 to 22 million dollars, okay? And our contribution is 20, just for the sake of discussion, you're sitting on about a $2 million reserve. Rough. So, the conversation we've had with the county was how do you take, you don't want the dollars just sitting in the bank. It's earning mon, interest, but you don't want it to be sitting there. So what do you do? To me, you can either say, I'm gonna bring the two pots together and you, you, you run it an assumption, you'll never be exactly zero, take whatever's left off and just do a simple stipend. Okay? Another way to do it is just do the stipend off of what, the, when we paid out everything for the year and we had $2 million or $4 million or, pick your number. Then, you do your, your, your stipend, just kind of then you do your, your, your stipend, just kind of like we do the low wealth, where we take the, the total dollars divided by the number, in that case certified, do the same thing here, and just make that a one-time payment, which you could do that as part of year-end, and then anytime you wanted to. Because you're gonna wanna make that number, honestly, you could do it anytime during the year, seriously. You can make, because we can make the assumption, you know, some assumptions, and you could do it whatever y'all thought was the appropriate, you do it at Christmas, for example, as a Christmas stipend, whatever it might be, you could, you could make that payment at any time.
Vice Chair Bohannon.
I'll, I'll let Board Member Crowley go.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Okay, so a few months ago, we voted, we had the, the money in reserve, and we voted to go ahead and disperse it, and we figured at that time, or we thought it could be about a thousand dollars per teacher, based on how much
Gross number, gross.
Gross, right, right, because some of that has to go to, towards benefits, some goes
Correct.
A cash payout. So is that, the, the money that we approved to disperse that reserve and not hold it anymore, but get it into the hands of our teachers, is that number in this, on this chart?
No, no.
So that's a separate dispersment that will happen?
That's a separate dispersment.
So when does, does that, when should teachers anticipate that?
If you've got the will, we can, now, we would set it up, in order to make everything get paid. So like tonight, I've got payroll rolling out as we speak.
Right.
Direct deposits. So if you approved the three percent raise and the dispersment, just, okay? Which one would you wanna do first? I would recommend do the salaries first.
Right.
So we come in, we'll have a payroll mid-September, somewhere between now and that date, okay? We go do the retro and get everybody paid up, excuse me, gets paid up to that point. Follow me?
Yeah.
So everybody would see what their raise is gonna be, what's the impact they're gonna have. I think it's, it's great from just a morale standpoint, and then they'll have, you know, it'll be between now and mid-September, when we have that mid-month pay. Then, as far as the stipend, let's, I'm gonna call it that, or whatever.
Right.
The stipend
He means the supplement.
Probably would, probably would take us, two days to create the file and set it up, a day to check. So in about three to five days, we could, we would be set that we could do, you know, all the deposits out.
Okay, so, so three to five days after the payroll's complete and those files are done, we could get started on this dispersment?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the retro, I think, I think the, the retro will take us
Right.
The retro, the retro will probably take on the regular pay about a week to, you know, seven days.
So is it fair to say that that dispersment from the reserve that we already approved to send out would be in teachers' hands by when? Mid-September?
The next, the next pay period would be the end of Septe, the next paycheck after the August one would be September. Are we going to be?
So we would do it in between those, right?
Yeah, if it's the will of the superintendent and the board, we could do two specials, do, okay, do one special, she's giving me that look question.
I'm only looking because I'm wondering, is this, when we discussed it, it was going to be part of the supplement, so it would be, I thought it would be in monthly supplement. So what I'm saying is
Well, but this would get it to them sooner.
Okay, so, okay, but you would still see an uptick in their monthly supplement?
Oh, yes ma'am.
Okay, okay, just making sure, so I'm not looking funny anymore.
Right, yeah, no, this would be, would catch it up, you know, for their retro, they'd see what they're, they'll be receiving per month, get comfortable with that, and then their next regular check, it would be in there going forward.
Okay.
So
Vice Chair Bohannon.
Thank you, because I'm, I'm, I'm still a little lost. So the, so, because I'm hearing a couple different things. So these salary schedules as presented, this is, we are, it, we are, like, based on the agenda here, we are being asked to adopt these salary schedules for this fiscal year.
Correct.
When you say retro, you're referencing back to the beginning
Of the fiscal year.
Because we've already, because our staff has already begun to receive, like, been paid. So like they started, at the beginning of the fiscal year, they were paid. The retro is for pay to account for the content of these schedules back to the beginning of the fiscal year. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, okay, got that. So Board Member Crowley was talking about the additional money that we were, we, we, the board voted to use, and you're saying that that would be included in that one-time retro payment? No? Okay, so help me, help me.
That would be
Separate, three to five-day
I would encourage you, you can do as, as y'all wish, but I would encourage you probably to keep it separate so people can see
Yes.
what they're getting paid.
Right, okay, great. So then to the superintendent's point, I think, and I don't want to speak for the board, but I remember when the discussion was had, it was about adding that to the supplement, and the reason why we were talking about that is because I remember saying I wasn't comfortable with the u, usage of that money because it would vary so much between, if we added it to the supplement, we could not guarantee what it would be because we, it could fluctuate, like tax revenues could go down, and then the, the supplement would go down. So I guess to that point, wh, help me understand why, like, we're doing a separate check to account for that. Is that, is that?
If, if we, we're talking about doing it as a stipend?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that, so we're, we're doing it as a stipend to account for the fact that the amount may vary because of the tax revenue.
I think the stipend gives you the ability that you, 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 you're paying it out as we do now, but then, if you see the revenue become sustainable, okay? Then you can add it to that supplement, because what you're bringing out, what Ms. Coon brings up, is, is it sustainable? If it's not sustainable, it becomes one-time, to me, it's a one-time payout, it's not a recurring payout. You see where the numbers are, and you can easily then go back and amend that supplement amount. Follow me?
Yes.
So I'm just splitting it by what we're trying, not what we're trying to accomplish, but where my team and how we gotta build this. We can do this, but we gotta do it in steps, you know? We can do the stipend, just say, okay, the reserve's X. We divide that by the number of certified staff, there's their check, very similar to how we do the low wealth computation today, and we've done that well. So that would work. Then, as far as the pay increase, we would do the, we would do a retro, so we can cover July and August, we can get it done before the mid-September checks go out, and then going forward, employees would receive that pay increase in their regular paycheck.
Got it.
And we would be done with the Article forty-six, right? Like that extra, that, that one time, the reserve payout would be over and done?
But then we would pick up another one
For the next year.
Next year, but yes.
And it could be higher or lower.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I will agree with Vice Chair Bohannon that we, our initial discussion, that it was that we were going to pay it in every paycheck, and we had, because we had discussed paying it separately, and we, yeah, Brown, uh, Board Member Brown Gaither did suggest that, but I think we had come back to paying it in a, a monthly paycheck, because I argued the point that it's gonna mess up their monthly paycheck if they don't know what it's going to be, and everybody said they're grown folk and can figure it out. So I think that's why there's so much confusion and a little bit of, of chaos with this.
Okay, I think, I think you're very good.
I think we got it.
Oh, I thought we were proceeding. I'm sorry, I thought we, I thought there were some more.
Thanks.
I'm sorry. Vice Chair Bohannon, do you have something else to say?
Sorry, I had other questions just about the supplements in general, because, and, and I apologize, I just have been looking, I, we got, since we got them today, I didn't have time to.
No, I got you.
So this might be a question for Chris, because it's about, like, why are the psychologists, speech pathologists, and audiologists in the same schedule? I know that's been, that's, that's a state thing?
The state, that's the exact, that schedule there comes right from the state.
And so it really comes down to a money thing, in that if we wanted to deviate, we would have to find the money ourselves to be able to deviate. Because, okay, because I, in my mind, I'm like, the, the duties are different, so, yep, thank you.
The state decided they're going to start separating a lot of your instructional support schedules, so you'll notice counselors have a different schedule, and social workers, speech pathologists. So what you're seeing there is the state, for lack of a better word, being more micromanaging in the salary schedules, and differentiating between roles, which then has other issues, because all roles are viable, instructional support staff.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question is, in, with advanced degree, is that, no matter which job it is, is that masters?
It's masters, or advanced degree could be a six-year degree or a doctorate, and there's a caveat in there of when they earned it. If they were not enrolled in classes before the master's program, or the, whichever program it is, before two thousand thirteen, August of two thousand thirteen, it doesn't count. Once again, that's something that we've all advocated for the state to change for many years, unless it's required by the position. I'll give you the example, media center specialist. It requires a master's degree, so once they earn that master's degree, they do get to pay for it. However, a social worker can have a master's degree, and if they earned it just recently, they do not get the master's degree pay. So if you recall, that was something that the board had requested the county commissioners to consider, is reinstate master's pay. Did that answer your question? The only folks who really get that pay is still the assistant principals and principals.
Okay, that, that does answer the question. I, I just noticed the schedules say, you have bachelor's pay, and you have advanced degree pay, and then some of them have doctorate pay, so I, I wondered what that meant.
We have folks still on those, and then we have some that would have it with national board certification, which is its own different scale.
Yes, okay, and then one last question. There are some positions on the classified scale, the classified pay schedule that, well, I'm sorry, this wouldn't, this isn't a classified position, but like dean of students, right? Like, we have some deans, but that's not
That's correct. A dean of students is a certified teacher position. It's this, so it's a, dean of students is a form of a certified teacher, then their certified teacher scale, they're not eligible for master's pay unless they earned it before two thousand thirteen.
Okay.
And the same parameters apply like an art teacher.
Okay, there's no additional money, they're, they just are?
Yeah, the, the firm, the, the term that I was, that I used when I was a dean of students is we are the principal's designee, and there was, there's certain, you know, of course, they're not administrators, by board policy, they cannot do certain functions. So, you know, dean of students, all their authority comes based on the president, principals designated them to, you know, address certain situations, but there are limitations to that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to our action items. The first action item tonight is to consider approval of the MOA of the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools and Winston-Salem Symphony partnership. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Miller, a second by Board Member Crowley, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Thank you, that is unanimous. Next, consider approval of the salary tables and retro pay. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Watts. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Thank you, that is unanimous. Next, consider approval of the Education Resource Group LLC for Mineral Springs Middle School. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay, so I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Vice Chair Bohannon. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the Achieve Arts Academy contract for Con Oak Middle School. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Thank you, that passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the Stimmerold City of Con Oak Middle School. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Board Member Watts, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Thank you, motion passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the New Brunson Elementary School General Construction Bid, which was briefed at the August thirteenth, twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four Buildings and Grounds Committee meetings. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion? Yes, Board Member Barr?
You know, either the superintendent or staff, just clarify for me once again, the Brownsville site, if it's a staff or?
Do you have a specific, do you have a specific question?
Well, just, just help us understand, what does that mean, just for the general community? What does that mean, and how would that affect the New Brunson being built on that land?
Actually, the subject matter expert's right behind me back here, so Steve's here if you've got specific questions. The Brownsville program is, the Brownsville is really a program, and it's a guidebook of what you do and how we move forward on this property with our environmental management plan and things of that nature. So it's, it's a guideline, it's a book that kind of tells us what we need to do as we move forward throughout the lifespan of the property.
Okay, so it is a guideline, right?
Let me make sure.
Steve, if I, did I represent that the right way?
Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, I'm Steve Berlin with the Calpact Firm. I think the way to look at a Brownsville is, and they're used all over the state for various purposes, is it's a way where the state, with all their background and the Brownfield section, as Bruce Nicholson said, puts this, and he's the head of the Brownfields, puts their stamp of approval on your use, that they say it's safe under their view and their review for the use you want to do. So way back in two thousand twenty-one, the state accepted this, and they knew what you were gonna do, and your process, I think, has been very transparent, has been very protective, it's been very prudent as you've gone through this process, and they've approved all the testing that was done, they tell you what testing they need to look at this, they then approve whatever systems you're gonna put in to protect, the vapor mitigation system, they approve even when you can go and start construction. They've approved that all the way, because what they're gonna do at the end of the day is, it's not you determining the risk, it's the state of North Carolina saying, your use is gonna be safe for the people that are gonna be there, and here are the children that you're gonna have in the school. Did that, did that answer your question, Mr. Barr?
Yes, let me ask another question. So is the place or the site where we're looking at building Brunson, is it, is it considered contaminated, not contaminated? Help me out with that, with that language.
It, it was an industrial site, there is some contamination on there that is above residential standards. So what that means is, if you're above a residential standard, it means that you have to do something to address that risk. If it was below the residential standards, you could just go ahead without doing anything. It's, it's certainly below commercial standards, and so what has been done here is a vapor mitigation system and a vapor barrier, so things put into place so that it addresses any risk. Because see, the Brownfields is a risk-based approach.
Right.
The other thing about this is, I think is important, because you hear Hanes a lot. Well, what you're doing here is protecting it from a Hanes situation, because you have to think about plumes coming from somewhere else, you know? There's been printing down, there's been dry cleaners, and the systems you put in here will be protective of that, too.
Okay, and you read my mind, because I was on the board in twenty-fourteen, twenty-eighteen, when we had the Hanes and the rant situation, it was, I mean, it was a real tough situation, a lot of
Caught you by surprise, comes from somewhere else on your property, right?
Right, right. Let me ask you another question. So Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, we are the first schools, is that correct, in the state?
The first The first, excuse me, first public school.
First public school?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, there's been some private schools.
Okay.
That's right.
All right, all right, thank you.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, I had questions about process. So, because I think one of the other confusing things is about the securing of a Brownfields agreement. So we, you know, you've said that the state has approved, back in '21, the state has approved our intention with the site.
Right.
At what point do we get to a place where we have an agreement in place? Is that after construct, like, when is that?
Okay. So where we're at now, you could begin construction tomorrow because we have the approval of the environmental management plan and the VIMS or the vapor mitigation system. So again, a bunch of approvals. The last, so you could start if you wanted and many Brownfields are finished before the Brownfields agreement. Brownfields agreement should be coming like any day. I mean, really, we're right on the cusp of it. Everything has been done and they've said, of course, I pinged them a little bit and it should be any, really very soon, we'll be seeing that. And then, I just finished one second on process. So we'll get that. And then after that, there'll be a process that the Brownfield section will do a public notice and comment before it's finalized.
Okay, and so we don't have to finish construction prior to get the Brownsville degree, based on what I hear you saying is that we're just waiting on sort of the internal process to get it. We've done everything on our end, we're just waiting on, what is it, the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality to finish whatever they're doing?
That's right.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, thank you. So we've had a motion, we've had a second, we've had discussion. So all in favor? Okay, opposed? So motion passes six to three. Next, consider approval of the revisions to Policy 5141.2, communicable diseases briefed and posted for public comment at the August 13th, 2024 Policy Committee meeting. Do I have a motion?
Second.
So I have a motion by Vice Chair Bohannon, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the RJR Wiley Stadium Project Fire Road Contract briefed in the Building and Grounds Committee, December 12th, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. So I have a motion by Board Member Miller, a second by Board Member Barr. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Okay.
I know that this was the monies that we approved to appropriate back at the end of last year. I'm just curious, where are we, or where are they on finishing the stadium? Because I, and maybe I made this up in my head, but I thought that they were going to be playing on the field. Did I make that up? This fall. This fall. No, they were supposed to this fall. Okay, so where, I thought they were supposed to be playing on the fall, the field by this fall. So I'm just curious where things are and? When something's approved, it's something. What's going on?
Can I give you a really quick update, especially as it relates to the projects? We're, you know, you allocated some funds out of fund balance a while back. That was to do fencing, the road and the lights. So our lights are installed, wire is pulled. Fencing, we've holding off on the fencing until the turf's installed so we don't damage the fence during the install of the fence. The fire road is emergency access road. Homefield Advantage is building the concession stand. So they're in the process in getting permits done for their concession stand, which is a major part of opening the stadium because that's where the restrooms are. And that's where all the power runs to. So as soon as they get their permitting and get that, it's probably, quite honestly, to be honest with you, it'll be, it'll probably be spring season before there'll be events there because of that. And so once they do that, their next step will be the press box and the Hall of Champions. But it's moving along. I mean, it's, we're, we're, we got a good, kind of good group working together. Rob Bloom from Frank Bloom stepped in and helped manage it. And so there's some good things happening there.
Daryl, because I do recall somewhere in the conversation that you stated earlier that we would not be ready this football season.
Correct.
Somewhere along that discussion, we've heard, I know I heard that, that based on everything, that we'll not be ready this football season because of things you just mentioned. That's correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so any other questions, comments? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, we've had discussion, all in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the Bolton Elementary School Electrical Upgrade Contract briefed in the Buildings and Grounds Committee, November 14th, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
So I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Vice Chair Bohannon. Any discussion?
Unreadiness or question?
Oh, any discussion or question, yes.
I'm sorry, and again, charged this to my age. I want to make sure we're doing this electrical upgrade. So we're doing this while classes are ineffective, it's not going to affect anything, right? No, I need to know, that's all I need to know.
Is, is there someone who can answer that?
Daryl, is that you?
Question?
Did you hear the question? Are they going to be doing the electrical upgrades? Are kids going to be moved or displaced or is that going to be happening? Is that the question? Okay.
Oh, no, ma'am. It will not impact, we'll probably do it every Christmas break or spring break or some break where there's not the kids in the building. But it's really, it's really a connect and a swift flip of the switch, so. Yes, ma'am.
That's a good question. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Thank you, that is unanimous. Next, consider approval of the West Forsyth High School Canopies Engineer Design Contract Phase Three, briefed in the Buildings and Grounds Committees on September 29th, 2023, and on January 11th, 2024. Do I have a motion? Okay, so I have a motion by Board Member Barr, a second by Vice Chair Bohannon. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, that is unanimous. Next, consider the approval of the Tiny Packer Field Lease at Northwest Middle School, briefed at the December 12th, 2023 Building and Grounds Committee. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, I have a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Okay.
It says that, is this, did this just not get in the original packet of all the leases that we approved back months ago?
Good evening.
Hi.
It did not. At that time, there was a structure on the property and there was some conversation about the ownership of that structure and making sure that we had clarity around who owned it and who maintained it. And so once we flushed all that out, we were able to bring this, this lease back.
And it falls under the same terms as all the other ones? Nothing is different, nothing is off?
That is true, yes.
Any other questions? All in favor? Thank you, motion passes unanimous, unanimously. That concludes our action items. Our next order up of business is the superintendent's update.
Thank you. So first slide, here are where we are with our numbers now. We've, this is our, what day is this? The 11th? Day 11. Day 11 totals, we're at about 50,624 students that count toward our ADM at this moment and with our pre-kits about 51,450. So we've grown a lot in the past week and we think it's going to just keep growing between now and right after Labor Day. Next slide, this is just to give a little bit more information about our bus runs and to say that as of last Thursday, 2,518 additional stops have been processed. I want to thank our transportation team for that. Originally, that was not going to happen until after, till in September. And so they rushed to get those stops, stops approved and set and got information out to our parents. And you can see edulog, there's been a lot of conversation about edulog, something went out last night to make sure that, with additional directions for parents. Okay? Immunization, this is really important. We talked about attendance early and our attendance campaign for the month of September. Immunizations are an important part of that process. And so this slide just talks about September 11th being that day. So that means by September 10th, we need to have all of our students have their immunizations. And so right now, as of last Friday, we have 3,900 students are out of compliance. That is less than last year and we were able to do some really great work to get that down last year. So I'm confident that we'll be able to do that again, but we really need awareness out with our, with our families. And we're working directly with those that need those immunizations. Bell schedule, so today, a survey went out, the bell schedule committee that the board asked to be formed at the end of last year, Dr. Williams has formed that and had the first meeting. Board Member Watts was part of that meeting. And so that committee, their first night as a committee, they created the survey together to send out to all of our families and I think employees as well, families and employees, to just get feedback in general as we start this process of are there going to need to be any changes in the future. So again, this was a suggestion of our board or a directive of our board that has been put into action and we'll keep you posted along the way. I know that Dr. Williams is going to be doing some updates soon. Cell phone policy, I will say that I've, the schools I'm going in, it is, it is happening. It's, I do not see phones in classrooms. It is a beautiful thing. I was at Atkins today, walked around in classrooms, phones are away and kids are engaged in learning. I will say we took the, the policy to our parent advisory last week. Board Member Coon and I talked to them about what else can we do and one of their, to just keep it, keep it going. Because if you start to get lax, it's going to just fall apart. We need to stay strong on this policy. And, and so they said, you know, let's start to sell it, you know, share some successes from students and parents, some, some things that they feel about it with their phones being away. We're already starting to hear some, some positive feedback from both. And we'll have our student advisory soon, so I cannot wait to hear from our students as well. I wanted to share, you know, our areas of focus. At the next board meeting, we're going to be doing an update about our three main initiatives around the code, around deeper learning and around inclusive practices. We'll be doing our update on our plan, our district-wide plan this year. But I wanted to highlight pictures. I'm, I'm enjoying seeing a lot of posts on some of our social media posts from schools that are posting students really engaged in learning. When we talk about deeper learning, and that is that students are thinking critically, they're demonstrating the skills in our portrait of a graduate along with the content that they're learning. And that is what I'm seeing in these photos. And so we just, we want to encourage people, keep posting your photos demonstrating kids engaged in deeper learning. You'll notice, and not that there's not a time for kids to be on a Chromebook, whether it be, you know, investigating. I saw a post today where kids were sharing their essays that were on it. So that's still great because they're collaborating. But you don't see one in any of these pictures. You see kids truly engaged in the learning process. So that's great. We're all in this together. So we've been doing this, this is our fourth year and right now, and we have over 100 central office staff members that will be doing different types of volunteerism in school. Some will be substituting. We started that about four years ago. That's, it's, we're giving an option this year so that everyone can actually feel good about what they're doing and feel successful with it. Some became reading warriors last year and they're going to continue. I think we probably had about 25 staff that did that. Some are going to start with tutoring with heart math. And this is something new, the last one. We are actually asking staff that, you know, may not feel as comfortable substituting. I mean, maybe they don't have a teaching background or they may not feel comfortable tutoring, but they could mentor a child. And so we are really trying to grow that program and we're working with Big Brothers, Big Sisters for the training and for the pairing with kids. So training's already starting to happen. I'll send this to the board in case any of you, I know some of you might be doing reading warriors, but if any of you want to mentor, it's about a once a week, 30-minute a week commitment with a child. But we really want to continue expanding mentorship for our students. And just as a reminder, Labor Day is Monday, so that'll be our first day where we are closed. And so I think it'll be a nice, we'll have been in school for three weeks. It'll be a nice little break for staff and students and then we'll be back on Tuesday. So thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from the board members? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Consider approval of the General Personnel Report, consider approval of the June 11th, 2025 Board of Education Meeting Minutes, consider approval of the June 25th, 2024 Board of Education Meeting Minutes, and consider approval of the July 23rd, 2024 Special Call Board Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion to approve all four consent agenda items? Second. Okay, so I have a motion by Board Member Barr, a second by Board Member Coon. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, that is unanimous. Tuesday, September 10th, 2024 will be our next regular meeting of the Board of Education. Before we begin our public comments section, let me say to our Cable 2 viewers, thank you for watching. This will conclude our broadcast.